Ms. Carbonell?
Um, present.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mrs. Conte-Mackey?
Here.
Mrs. Furia?
Present.
Mr. McDowell?
Present.
Mrs. Benici?
Mr. Nasta?
Here.
Ms. Santana?
Present.
Mrs. Gotheeden?
Here.
Board member, Mr. McDowell, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Yes, Madam President.
Our post-laboratory citizens of America and to the Republic for which this stands one mission under God and interdisciplined liberty and justice for all.
Board member, Mr. McDowell, would you please read the mission statement?
Yes, I will, Madam President. The mission of the township of Union Public Schools, excuse me, the mission of the township of Union Public Schools is to build on the foundations of honesty, excellence, integrity, strong family, and community partnerships. We promote a supportive learning environment where every student is challenged, inspired, empowered, and respected as diverse learners. Through cultivation of students' intellectual curiosity, skills, and knowledge, our students can achieve academically and socially and contribute as responsible and productive citizens of our global community.
Thank you so much, Mr. McDowell. Ms. Coon, would you please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Yes. Open Publics Meeting Act notice. In accordance with the provision of the New Jersey Opens Public Meeting Act, the Township of Union Board of Education has caused notice this meeting to be published by having the date time and place thereof published in the Star Ledger and Union County local sources posted in the administrative building of 2369 Morris Avenue in Union, New Jersey. File with the Township clerks and mailed to all persons, if any, who have requested said notice. The Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding items on the agenda or on any issue. Individuals need to identify themselves by name and address. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the Board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The Board asks all members of the public to be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Comments regarding students and employees of the Board will not be responded to by the Board. Madam President.
Thank you so much, Ms. Coon. The Board will now go into executive session. If feasible to discuss personnel and legal issues, an action may be taken. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? This motion has been properly moved by Ms... Thank you. Ms. Gotheeden and seconded by Ms. Santana. Can I have a roll call, please? Ms. Capiello?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conte-Mackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Furia?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Nasta?
Yes.
Mrs. Gotheeden?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Yes. Open Publics Meeting Act notice. In accordance with the provision of the New Jersey Opens Public Meeting Act, the Township of Union Board of Education has caused notice this meeting to be published by having the date time and place thereof published in the Star Ledger and Union County local sources posted in the administrative building of 2369 Morris Avenue in Union, New Jersey. File with the Township clerks and mailed to all persons, if any, who have requested said notice. The Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding items on the agenda or on any issue. Individuals need to identify themselves by name and address. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the Board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The Board asks all members of the public to be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Comments regarding students and employees of the Board will not be responded to by the Board. Madam President.
Thank you so much, Ms. Coon. The Board will now go into executive session. If feasible to discuss personnel and legal issues, an action may be taken. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? This motion has been properly moved by Ms... Thank you. Ms. Gotheeden and seconded by Ms. Santana. Can I have a roll call, please? Ms. Capiello?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conte-Mackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Furia?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Nasta?
Yes.
Mrs. Gotheeden?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. May I have a motion to move back into our public regular meeting?
Second.
The motion has been properly moved by Ms. Scott Hayden and seconded by Ms. Santana. Can I have a roll call, please, Ms. Capiello?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Furia?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Venisi? Oh, sorry, she's not here. Mr. Nesta?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
So, good evening, everyone. On behalf of the township of Union Board Education in the community, we would like to host a moment of silence for those that we know have passed away and those for we may not have information about, out of respect. We just want to hold a moment of silence for one of our students. Thank you, and may her memory be a blessing.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion to approve the following minutes?
Second.
This motion has been properly moved by Ms. Conte Mackey and seconded by Mr. Cohen. Roll call, please, Ms. Capiello.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey? Mrs. Furia?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Nesta?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes. Now, we're going to move into our communications that are reflected on the personnel agendas. But before we do so, I just want to welcome our addition tonight to the board. She is a Union High School Scholar, Ms. Ayana Josephette. And we look forward to getting your report. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take a moment to thank you all for being here tonight. As we begin the public comment portion of this meeting, I want to remind everyone that we value your input and appreciate your time and effort in sharing your thoughts and concerns. As Ms. Kuhn stated previously, I ask that all comments be respectful and constructive and that we refrain from calling out, yelling, and disrespectful language. Our students are watching, our children are watching. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the board. Please remember that while we are eager to hear your perspectives, we may be unable to engage in a back-and-forth dialogue during this portion of the meeting. However, your comments will be carefully reviewed and taken into consideration by the board, and if feasible, the superintendent or designee will respond to questions in real time or provide a response at a later date. Thank you so much. Do we have any cards? Ms. Jeffries, good evening. Is this for resolutions or are you waiting for the second set of public comments? Thank you. So, please come up to the mic.
Virginia Jeffries, 236 Brighton Avenue, East Stars, New Jersey. Good evening to all in attendance physically and virtually. I have questions on the resolutions and on what's the physical planning committee in reference to the attorney bills. And this was asked at the last meeting, the work session that was held last week on March 11th. Why is the check register so unorganized? Why are the checks not in sequential order? Why is the check order in the form of a running account for all attorney costs? And why is there a check register only for legal fees and not a bills and claim by vendor's name as in Item 17, approval of bills? And why are the invoices identification not in the invoice column? As for tonight's policy committee under 15A, the first readings of these policies were never presented properly for the public to comment or have input. There must be a first reading at a public meeting before there can be a second and final reading. At the March 11th, 2025 work session under 14A Policy Committee, Policies 0155 Board Committees and Policies and Policies 7510 Use of School Facilities and Policy Regulation 7510 Use of School Facilities. They were presented as a first and final reading for adoption. So, on tonight's agenda, those policies are not published on the agenda. So, people cannot comment on them. They're unaware of them, and they lack input. So, the board is not following proper policy in having a first and second reading. Only at a second reading can a policy be adopted. You can't do a first and only reading and adopt the policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffries. Okay, we're going to move right along to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. So, first off tonight, as we did last month and we're continuing, I would like to welcome up here Kelly Piano, Principal of Washington Elementary School, and Ms. Christine Henderson, PTA President. And they were going to provide a presentation on Washington Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kelly Piano, the principal at Washington School. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm here with Ms. Melissa Glenn. She is one of our PTA Executive Board members. Will be sharing a little bit about our PTA as well. So, tonight I'd like to highlight some of our academic growth thus far this year, some of our kindness initiatives, and some of our family engagement activities. So, first I'd like to show you some of our iReady growth from Diagnostic 1 till Diagnostic 2, from the fall to winter. It's broken down by grade level, and this is math. On the right side, you will see the percentage that was on or above grade level at the beginning of the year. And then, the second number is on or above grade level at the second diagnostic. The number in the green bubble is the growth we have seen from Diagnostic 1 to 2. And we're expecting a larger growth until the end of the year at Diagnostic 3. So, for kindergarten, they've gone from 19% to 52%. First grade, 11% to 27%. Second grade, 10% to 29%. Third grade, 12% to 35%. And in fourth grade, 35% to 50%. And that is on or above grade level at this moment in the area of mathematics. In the area of reading, our kindergarten students began at 36% on or above grade level, and they are now 62%. Our first grade went from 26% to 45%. Our second grade students, 34% to 60%. Our third grade students, 50% to 68%. And our fourth grade, 40% to 48%. So, I'd like to congratulate all of my hard-working teachers and students for all their hard work so far. Huge growth. The next few slides, I'd just like to highlight a few things that we are doing at Washington this year. We are the Washington Wildcats. So, every month, we are celebrating the Students of the Month as the Wildcat of the Month. And the theme goes along with the character tree that our counselor does lessons on every month. So, all the themes, our bulletin board would be respect. Our activity is on respect. And then, we celebrate the student that's nominated for that character tree. So, some of the themes so far have been respect, kindness, integrity, responsibility, and fairness. Each class has a representative. They receive a certificate, and their pictures go in the weekly newsletter, and the kids love it. We also celebrate every Friday, any students that were caught being kind. Any staff member can nominate any student for an act of kindness. Sometimes, it's tying someone's shoe. Sometimes, it's holding a door. Sometimes, students are absent, and then, the next day, a student will catch them up. So, we have all the way from pre-K. There's a pre-K student up there, up to fourth grade. And again, they receive a certificate. They get to pick a prize out of my prize box, which they think is an amazing prize box, but it's just Amazon. And they get their picture in the newsletter. One of our really fun activities this year was the Great Kindness Challenge. And the theme this year was kindness moves. So, what I liked, I wanted to get the children moving, especially it was in the winter. It was last month. So, what we did was we had a dance party. So, Monday through Friday, we had the five grade levels come down to the gym. We played music, and they just danced, and they had so much fun. So, that was one of our really fun activities this year. And here are some other activities that go along. Shout out to our counselor, Kim Morano, who does all of these kind of activities with me. She might think I'm crazy at times. But we had the whole building come out in September, and we did a huge rainbow right in the middle. All of the students participate in everything. All of their thumbprints are in the rainbow of respect. All the students filled out boomerangs, how to be kind to someone so it can boomerang back to them, the kindness pledge, and the unity and diversity. I'd like to turn it over to Melissa so she can just touch base real quick on any PTA family engagement events.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Melissa Glenn. I'm the PTA corresponding secretary for the Washington PTA. Our president, Christine Hendrickson, couldn't be available this evening, so I came in her place. As working parents, we know how hard it is to make school events a priority. We have work. We have after-school activities. And adding another thing to the list can be really hard sometimes. So, that's why this year, our executive PTA board really wanted to make parent engagement and involvement a priority and communicate with all of the families of our students. So, we started by making communication a priority by putting a PTA corner in Ms. Piano's weekly Wildcat newsletter, which it goes out every week. And the PTA has a dedicated section in the newsletter to let parents know what's going on every single week, which is awesome. We also have been using social media to keep families in the loop about upcoming events, volunteer opportunities, fundraising, and other ways to get involved. We also have been focused on planning activities that are fun, meaningful, and also make it easy for families to be able to show up for their kids. And it's working. We're having a really good turnout at our events, especially at our grade-level curriculum nights. Seeing so many families come out to be a part of the school community has been amazing, and we're so grateful for the support. I also want to take a moment to recognize our amazing teachers who have taken time out of their personal lives, away from their families, to be present at a lot of these events which take place after school. Their presence has made such a difference. It means so much to the families and to the students to see them there. So, I definitely wanted to say thank you to all of them and to Mrs. Piano, who always shows up. We're very grateful for her as well. It's been a great year so far. So, we have a few pictures I'll take you through really quickly. This is our family nights at Chuck E. Cheese. We raise money for the PTA, and we all get together. That was a lot of fun. We had a Zumba night, 90's style, for the 90th day of school. And then, we have our curriculum nights. This was the pre-K curriculum night. They had an Under the Sea theme. We had a kindergarten curriculum nights. First grade curriculum night, as you can see, great turnout, lots of kids coming out. We have our second grade curriculum night and our third grade curriculum night. Fourth grade isn't in here because they haven't had theirs yet, but it's coming. We also had a really fun theater activity where the kids could participate in a play. They had roles, they had costumes. It was great, very well attended. This is our Fall Festival, which we have at the beginning of the year to get started on the right foot. Awesome turnout for that as well. We had Skate Night. We had this at Wernacole Park. Basically, shut down the whole rink just for Washington families. That was fun. And I'm very excited about this. We have our Washington Heritage Night coming up in May, where each family, if they're interested, can host a table representing their culture. They can decorate it. They can share food, wear traditional clothing, artifacts, art, and basically just celebrate the great diversity we have at Washington School. I'll be representing Italy. My last name is Glenn, but I'm Italian. So, I'm looking forward to that one. Thank you.
Thank you for having us tonight.
Colleagues, any comments or questions? Well, and I apologize if I didn't get the name right. Lisa Glenn? Melissa Glenn. I apologize. Ms. Piano, Melissa, that was a wonderful presentation. And it is true what they say. Pictures say exactly what's happening in terms of the culture and environment that you are creating and fostering at Washington. And it is just nice to see that this partnership works and that the students ultimately are benefiting from that partnership. So, thank you to the parents and to the staff and to the leadership. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. Next up is Jefferson School. If Ms. Laura Demato could come up, principal. Ms. Lori Roof, is Ms. Roof here? That's the vice principal that supports and leads the building with Ms. Demato, as well as Ms. Lisa McMahon, president of the PTA. But before we let Ms. Demato start the presentation, I would just also like to congratulate Ms. Demato on Jefferson School, who was selected to participate and showcase school in this year's PBSIS Forum. As we know, PBSIS is very important. You know, teaching the kids a lot of different things, getting along, leadership, and stuff like that. So, congratulations. I'm excited to see what you could share to the state and everyone else participating in the PBSIS. So, congratulations. So, I would like to switch over.
Can you open?
No, I can't. Sorry.
Everybody, on the count of three, do this, and it's going to change up for us. Ready? It works at Jefferson. Oh, yeah. Oh, I thought no one was going to fix it first. There we go. I mused, I counted to three. Okay, thank you, everybody. Good evening. I'm Laura Demato. I'm the principal of Jefferson School. We do have a vice principal. Her children are high in sports right now and was unable to make it. There's Lisa McMahon, our PTA president this year. And very honored, we always get very excited to have the opportunity to talk about Jefferson. And it is a magical thing that happens that we have six elementary schools, pre-K to 4, that come to us for the one year. This is actually our 11th opening after the renovation this year. And it still looks brand new. The children coming through us from 10 quick months that we have them, it is a tricky way to build an investment from our PTA because they're so, you know, with the K to 4 buildings, they're there every year, year after year. And of course, we see siblings come through, and that's always very exciting. And I don't want to date myself, but I'm in the district 26 years now. So, now I'm seeing more than siblings come through from my first couple of years of teaching. So, with our, I do first want to talk about the PBSIS because it is a big part of our environment at Jefferson. We are a leader-in-me state lighthouse school, which is actually a global recognition because leader-in-me is, there are leader-in-me schools all around the world. We are a state school of character. We are a national school of character. All of those things tied into our PBSIS very nicely. PBSIS is Positive Behavior Supports in Schools, where basically the children are rewarded when they're caught following along with our expectations of kindness, respect, doing their work, being responsible for each other. And what's so nice about each school year that comes through and each group of children, they come to us and so quickly jump into carrying themselves as leaders, where we all know in fourth grade, you know, you're the oldest of the building. You get to really stand out from all of the children. But in fifth grade, you're all 10. You're all turning 11. So, it is really nice, quickly by October, to see our children that stand as leaders, carry themselves as leaders, and are all helping each other. The most, what we don't talk about so much is how does all of that social-emotional learning turn and help our academics? But as we all know, when you feel appreciated, when you are contributing to your environment, if you have jobs in school, we have opportunities for the kids to take part in so many different clubs within our school day. When you feel appreciated and valued, you do better. And you want to be there, and our scores also then go up. So, there's empowerment on the teacher level. There's empowerment at my level, at the administrative level, and then, the children too, with tracking their academics and helping each other. And it's a beautiful thing that we get to watch in a very quick 10 months. So, the State Spotlight School, little fun fact, in 2010, Hannah Caldwell received the State Spotlight School. And I was there with Kelly Piano, Melissa Glenn, Lesina Niagara. We all happened, you know, there's a large group of us that over the years have known each other. Kelly Piano was my son's fourth-grade teacher, and he is 27. You're welcome. So, it is nice over the years to see the connections being made that way too. But Burnett was once a State Spotlight School as well. This year, we have been acknowledged because of our Tier 2 work. So, the Tier 2 work is, the Tier 1 is, you know, catching the child, being good. They get the Blue Knight Nickel. They're allowed to use it in the store or put it in a raffle, things like that. Today, there was a Hot Chocolate Social that children were allowed to use their nickels to participate in. So, all those amazing things that you're going to meet Ms. Fattamun De Court, our counselor, that she does so many of those things in the school building. So, but the Tier 2 is when we see, maybe there's some groups of children that they just need a little extra resources and support. We are being acknowledged for how we are reaching those children as well, to have them be a part of our school community and feel like leaders moving on to middle school. So, that is a niche kind of thing, but it's very important to us. So, right now, I'm going to change it over, hand it over to Ms. McMahon to share with you about our PTA activities. And then, I know we have also another presentation for two of our staff members.
Hi, everyone. Again, this is Grant. I just wanted to highlight some of the 2024-25 school year activities. The Top Course, our activity, we have already played. And there are two upcoming activities. At the beginning of the year, we plan a meet and greet. We invite all, both children and families for ice cream. And so, parents decide to be PTA members, the family and friends. And the kids will get to run around the playground, get to know one another since we're all coming from different schools. That's a real huge turnout. And if the kid's nice because if he gets to know, you know, they walk the hall next Monday, they go, hey, hi, so-and-so, I would have known you if I didn't have the meet and greet. So, that was a big activity. We have a welcome back staff breakfast, the holiday luncheon. For the breakfast, obviously, the first week of school. And then, the holiday luncheon is just right before the holiday break. We have a school spirit fundraiser throughout the year. It is on social media. A flyer went along. And we also, this gets opened throughout the year, and we receive a nice profit from that also towards our fundraising efforts. Every other month, we have a pretzel pajama day. Some of the board members take, I usually take a day off, and I go, one of the other members will pick up pretzels and sit at the school, sort them out, and sell. And we keep talking about pretzels. Kids get very excited for that. And this actually is a really We did, as Washington stated, we did Theater Week. That is a huge turnout. It's, kids get very excited for it. Dining Donates, we just did one last week with Five Guys. Outback, we've done Master Pizza. Family Paint Night, we had Jill Rible. She's a teacher, our teacher at Kwame. She's fantastic. We did, as a family day, you paint her person in the canvas, draw your paints, and she led everyone, got paints, a beautiful picture. Dave and Buster's was a huge fundraiser. We sold three loaded carts for the holidays. It was due because it was stocking stuffers. We received, we sold $3,000 worth. And then, they could use it anytime. But then, we had a family fun night, and that was a huge turnout. We had a lot of Jefferson families come. The kids all play with their friends and run around. And if we all sat ate, we had a whole section of Dave and Buster's. It was a really nice night. Holiday Shop, we do for the holidays, we last, it goes there, of course, three times a year. We've had a family bingo night as a gift back, no charge. And, you know, always if you want to. times a year. We've had a family bingo night as a gift back, no charge, only if you want to buy snacks, but the prizes were sponsored by the PTA. We've had two assemblies so far, and the last one was like the glow in the dark kindness and anti-bullying. I know the kids, I know my son, his friends came home and said it was probably the best assembly they ever saw. Just at the end of February, had a PIP dance. That was very well received. Like, I think more than half the school was there. And upcoming, we have Teacher Appreciation Week. We'd like to give back to our wonderful staff. We have a clothing drive this Saturday, if anybody wants to drop off anything, nine to 12. Family Fun Day is going to be bowling in Linden Lanes. That's more information to come. We're going to have a Mother's Day plant sale, a graduate loan sign sale. And our biggest event of the year is the pool party. We fundraise all year, because it does cost a few thousand dollars for rent for pools a day. The kids can get bus there, include all their food, snacks, a DJ, and just make it a nice end beer party for them.
Thank you both very much, Mr. Demato. Thank you. Questions? We're good?
Any comments? Mr. McDowell, I see you.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but I think you guys had planned a karaoke night? Because I was looking forward to that. I was going to come and sing, but...
You can count me in, too, if there's a karaoke.
Sorry to hear that.
The board was ready.
Well, thank you, Mrs. McMahon and Mrs. Demato.
Yes, Mrs. Demato, Ms. McMahon, and congratulations once again on the PBSIS Award. It seems like all the schools are taking great care to institute activities and initiatives that address the social and emotional along with the academics. So thank you to all of you. And Ms. McMahon, those were a hefty number of activities, and it's nice to see that the academics is being complimented. So congratulations to all.
And we're going to lean on Ms. Demato to make sure she shares all these secrets again recognized, because now, like you said, over the years, we'll get them, all our schools recognized, right, under your leadership. So thank you very much. With Ms. Demato being here, I thought it was a perfect timing. I'd like to call Leslie Niagara and Fatima Decort. So there's a Governor's Award every year. It's overseen by the Department of Ed. And you get nominated, and then the Department of Ed selects. We had two people this year that are being recognized for the Governor's Year, Governor's Award, representing our district. So congratulations. That's awesome. It could be teachers, ESPs, so any of our support staff, as well as our teachers, when they get, you know, nominated and selected, you get recognized. So congratulations. Mr. Demato, if you want to stay, we'll get a quick picture. Mr. Court and Ms. Niagara. Who's Mr. Court? Congratulations. Great job. Every year. But thank you for being recognized. Come on in. And then the board, you want to...
We know it's Greg.
Yeah.
All right, just move a little this way. There you go.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, I would like to ask, we have three student liaisons that are joining us for the next few months. First up is Ayana Josephat. So you have a lot of pressure on you to first go in. But I met them all a couple of weeks ago, and we have some amazing students. These are three that really show what kind of students go through our halls at the high school. And I'm excited to have Ayana share with us some stuff around the school district, or the high school.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ayana Josephat. I'm a senior at Union High School, and I'm one of the three student liaisons. And today, I'll be presenting on different positive events that's going on around the district between February and March. Okay. To begin with, in honor of Black History Month, the Vox Hall Historical Society held its annual Black History Month essay contest. GROTC is very successful whenever they go out to competition. So they are currently in preparation and with practices and fundraisers for the National High School Drill Championship in May. And the National Honor Society, students are providing tutoring in the different subjects like math, science, English, and history to the students in the high school. The Girls in Gear Program, it was launched. It was, it's basically an enrichment program for young girls, focuses on confidence boost and life skills, and it also invites biking, a nice activity to get the girls involved. And then recently, a survey was sent out to people in the township called the Strategic Planning Needs Assessment Survey, which was to receive feedback from the district on how to improve and how to shape future initiatives. Now, moving on to March, the juniors just recently took the NJGPA last week, between the 10th and the 14th. The valedictorian and salutatorian of Union High School, Mr. Shaw and Mr. GK, were announced, as well as the top 25 were acknowledged. In the Allied Health Program, they participated in a blood drive. Many of the students are CPR certified and EpiPen certified. Also, the Parent Advisory Group, also known as CPAG, had a training on March 13th. Peer ambassadors, they attended, led by Ms. Bridges, they attended the Kane Leadership Conference. The UHS Dance Team, they've been also very successful. They attended competition, and they scored the highest in both of their categories. Washington School participated in a clothing drive, and Hannah Caldwell participated in a food drive. And two UHS students, Ethan Santos and Ray Javate, were accepted into the prestigious West Point Now, moving on to athletics, there were about 350 student athletes during the winter season district-wide, including UHS and the middle schools. Wrestling, boys and girls basketball teams at the UHS all qualified for the New Jersey State Tournament. Caleb Duvelson and Babadara Alouay were the 2025 Group Four Team Shot Book Championship Champions. Girls four by 200 and four by 400 relay teams won the 2025 North Two Group Four Winter Track Championship. Our track team is very successful. Ray Javate and Arian Betances, they both qualified for the NJSIAA Last Chance Qualifier for the Stant Tournament, and this is the first time in 10 years that this happened. And Ariel Azeretto qualified for the NJSIAA State Wrestling Tournament in Atlantic City. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ayana. And Ayana did highlight the top 25 in 25, and she is on that list. Anybody?
So may I tell them a secret?
Are you ready?
Ayana, when she first sat here, she said that she was, you know, a little nervous. But I just think that you just did amazing. I think you did better than us. You have me nervous. So amazing job, very thorough presentation, and top 25. That is a great achievement. Ayana, I just want to ask you, when you graduate, what are your plans? Share a little bit with us about you.
When I graduate, I decide, well, I'm planning on attending a college or university, and then from there, I would like to go to law school.
Ooh, very good. There we go. Anybody else? No? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, Madam President, while they're getting that back up, we were having some issue with displaying. I'm going to just continue to go. Got to be prepared. So this, a couple weeks ago, we had our first Parent Advisory Board meeting. I'm meeting with a group of parents. People put in themselves to be part of this group. We made a selection to get representation district-wide. And we had our first meeting. Looking forward to working with that group. A lot of my presentation, Ayana covered, so thank you. You made my life a little easier. I really want to focus on our fiscal. Hopefully, this comes up.
So Dr. Benacusa, as it comes up, can you tell us a little bit about the recipients that got the Governor's Awards?
So yes, yearly, all districts can nominate people from your district. Selections get sent in, you know, through the county and state, Department of Ed. And then you get selected either as a teacher or ESP. So it's just another recognition that the state does to kind of really recognize all the hard work and dedication that goes into, you know, every day as an educator. It's...
I guess I was asking about the two young ladies.
Mr. Court and Ms. Niagara. So yes, Mr. Court and Ms. Niagara. I mean, I worked with Mr. Court at the high school. She was a counselor there for many years. And I got to get to know Ms. Niagara over the years, especially when they were vetting a new ELI system or program. But both of them are outstanding educators, helping our kids in many ways. So I think it's a good representation of our district. So we're going to move on, since this is up, and that's great. We will have more student liaisons over the next two months.
Dr. Benacusa, I'm so sorry. So being that Madam Chair did ask about Mrs. Niagara and Mrs. Decort, I must say that personally, they taught, they both taught two of my children, and they are, we have amazing, amazing teachers, amazing, amazing students. But those two women bring a flair to Jefferson. They were actually my first introduction to Jefferson, and a million times over and over, great women, great teachers, great educators.
And I would just like everyone to know that's watching, this presentation will be up online. So there's other things that are part of it, that other people covered, that you could also go back and... But a quick slideshow of all our Black History Month projects throughout the district. a short highlight. Without them, we wouldn't be able to... And the one thing I would like to highlight in those pictures is, you see, you always see smiles on the kids' faces, which is huge. When you're enjoying yourself and learning, it's awesome. We did just recognize our unsung hero, Damian Kazal, at Kane this past week. Hannah Caldwell celebrated the 100th Day of School. I really want to share some of the impacts on the budget. This is our revenue impact. And as you look at that, you know, a lot of numbers there, but I'm highlighting where we lost funding. So the community is aware, it's going to be challenging. We got to still put in, this is a preliminary budget right now. The end of April, we'll be submitting to the state a final budget. But where we lost, federal funding, we're anticipating a loss of 877. That comes out later this year. Medicaid reimbursement, we lost 200,000. Plus enrollment adjustment, we lost 1,147,000. Equalization Aid, why I have an asterisk there is it's part of state aid, but I really wanted to highlight, you know, we lost from last year, over 4 million, almost $5 million. That's a big number. Total state aid loss is 1.7. But again, we lost in other areas as well. If you're looking at our total loss in revenue this year, it's 3.9 million. But to just put it in perspective, we're running next year's budget a million dollars less than this year. A million dollars less, a year later, with, you know, how contracts increase, salaries, benefits increase. And you'll see some of the cost drivers. Every year, you know, when we bid out transportation, we get hit sometimes with a 10% increase. And that's one of the areas, it's tough to get transportation contracts to support your district. So we're going to be working, Ms. Coon, myself, the leadership team, on doing the best we can on making sure we're submitting, we're still working through it from the preliminary to the actual budget. We'll be submitting the final budget in April 29th, or approving April 29th. But, you know, we really do need to reflect on those numbers this year. We will get through it, as we always do, but, you know, there's going to be some impacts. So the cost drivers, and this, we're highlighting 93% of our budget, operating budget, only a couple areas, 93%. So 72% of our budget is salary and health benefits. That's, you know, a huge percentage. And then you look at the other ones that make up, you know, about another 20%. So in the end, that 7% left, for everything else that's not represented there, it's challenging. I don't have facilities in there. And we have a lot of work to do with our facilities. But again, just to bring perspective to how challenging, and this is Ms. Coon's probably toughest time of the year, but we work collaboratively and we support each other, we'll figure it out. But those numbers just keep increasing, too. Again, out of district tuitions, we get renewals. Again, if they want to increase it, we're kind of stuck. Related services, transportation, like I talked about. And don't get me wrong, salaries and benefits, I'm highlighting because it's the biggest percent. But education today, educators are not, you know, it is a tough job to do day in, day out. And I wish we had endless amounts of money to be able to really pay our educators what they deserve. But obviously, you know, our budgets aren't endless. So I just really wanted to highlight that again. So Hannah Caldwell, real quick, as you see, the map's progressing. You can come and look at this further. It shows what's to be in demoed. We have a small area that's still being demoed, mainly the gym and auditorium. The rest has already been post-cleared. This is some of the stuff that we've been going on. Part of the, before we could put it back, is the encapsulation. I wanted to show that we had to clear the contents out. We put them in storage units. But you could see the finishing of the demolition as well. These are some of the upcoming things that it's exciting, because when you're talking sheet rock, I'm getting excited, because that means we're coming back to putting that school back together. But we want to make sure it's sealed tight. And that's one of the biggest things. We needed the temperature to be above 50 to do a lot of the exterior work. And now that we're getting warmer temperatures, we're able to do some of those things. We have some other things we got to make sure. But before we put anything back, like we've said the past few months, we are going to make sure that that's sealed tight. So I did put up there, we put out information to the families in multiple languages. IReady had to access it, because it is a good indicator. I know it was highlighted in the principal's presentations. We're seeing growth, which is awesome. But there, we put out how the parents could access it, so they see what their child's doing and where they're growing. But we did see growth in many areas, from one to two, in reading and also math. And again, there's the other links to it. So anyone that didn't see it in their email could go there. We also did an overview on IReady. Our directors were interviewed, and the link's there as well. Look for this, About, It's All About the U, Farmer Frontline. Farmer Frontline is student-led. About the U is staff-led. About, a lot of great things going on in our district. Our strategic plan, I know, was meant... So we had eight founded, not founded or inconclusive was three. There's the locations. The Battle Hill, I did, I tall-sized, because that's the one we, from last week to this week, we ended up changing from not founded to founded. Reporting, again, these will be affirmed next board meeting. We had five founded, six not founded or inconclusive, and there's the locations. And then a reporting period's there too. This is March 12th to March 18th. So I would just like to highlight one of the resolutions this month, the Bar Family Workshop. You know, check it out. We do a lot of parent workshops. You know, we want to get as many people involved. Some are in person, some are online, but please make sure you're, you know, going and checking out a lot of the things we're offering. We have a whole platform online that you could always go back also and watch. But Madam President, that's going to conclude my superintendent's report.
Dr. Benacosta, I know that we asked you for a lot to share with us in a very short period of time, but thank you for a very thorough presentation. And, you know, when we have individuals come to the board meeting, we take everything that you say very seriously. And one of the areas that we've always considered is the socio-emotional aspect of the child, the academic. But a lot of the things that we can do are really dependent on the budget. And it was rather defeating when we got news that some of our titles and grant funds were going to be reduced. But knowing the staff and the leadership in the community here, I know that we can work together to figure it out and not compromise the standard of education for our children. So thank you.
And absolutely, you know, even though these are our numbers right now, we're going to fight for more funding. And again, we do have a great relationship with our legislatures, legislators, and as well as the town. So we're going to continue to get back some of the money that we lost.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Kohan?
Thank you, Madam President. I was going to reserve these comments to the start of the Fiscal and Planning Committee report, but I'll offer them now. So as Dr. Benacosta shared with us, we have a very challenging budget before us as we move through final drafting and adoption in late April. I'm aware that the administration, working with our council, is going to be looking to appeal the decisions of the State Department of Education in an effort to try to get some of that funding restored. And as Dr. Benacosta also mentioned, we are in regular dialogue with our state legislators, and I know that they're on our side and they will advocate for us, so that's helpful. To balance the budget, there have been some reductions in several areas, and I want to make sure that I make note to the public, and you'll see this reflected in resolutions F-18 through F-24, we are making an appropriation from our reserves to try to get the budget to balance. $3 million will still remain in reserve, but that's only 1.7% of our operations. So it's not like we're flush with cash. It would not be advisable for us to use the rest of those reserves. We need to have something there in the event that we have another catastrophe like we had with Hannah Caldwell School this year. One of the things that is unfortunate in regards to the way that the state has responded to us this year in the state funding appropriation is that it's based on the state funding formula, which is found in law. And there's a standard in that statute called sufficiency, whereby the Department of Education's analysts take a look at the economic well-being of each community and determines how much money the community should be contributing toward its operations. So as we all know, as we look around, union is thriving right now in many, many ways. However, while on paper, that sufficiency calculation might suggest that we are in a greater ability to pay higher taxes, we also know that 52% of the families and our students are eligible for free and reduced lunch, which is another indicator of economic well-being. And one of the other challenges that the board has before us, and it's not a small challenge, and it's not an insignificant one, is that we are currently bargaining for agreements with our employee unions, and we want to make certain we reach fair settlements with them in accordance with the esteem that we hold all of our employees. So all of these things come together at a critical moment and impact one another in very different ways and in very challenging ways. One of the other aspects under the law is that we could seek to increase taxes beyond the 2% statutory cap. We would have to get the approval of voters, and we don't think that that's appropriate or advisable at this point in time, so we're not going to be doing it. We have to live within our means. We're going to be seeking to get the additional state aid, and we're going to look for the efficiencies that we need to find in our operations. And as Dr. Benacosta mentioned, he and Ms. Kuhn will present to the board a balanced budget, or they have presented a balanced budget in draft form, that will be preliminarily submitted to the Department of Education for review and approval. And the budget that we approve in April will be balanced.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Kohan. Before we continue, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the St. Patty's Day Parade this Saturday. I had a wonderful time and experience. I had never been there, I'm ashamed to say that, but it was a large turnout, highly diverse participation, and it was nice to see Ms. Bosser there and our Union Township High School students participate in the parade. So kudos to the town and all those individuals that helped organize that event. Also, I love the pictures. Dr. Benacosta, for Black History Month, I just would like in the future for us to get a little background as to what the pictures are about in the activities. Beautiful. And also, March is Women's History Month, so I guess we'll be seeing a similar presentation in the future. Thank you so much. Now, we will have the Education and Student Discipline Committee Chair, Ms. Furia, to present the resolutions that will be voted upon tonight.
Thank you. So before that, I'd like to highlight some other upcoming events. March is also National STEAM Month, or New Jersey STEM Month. So the community is having a three, I believe, K5 or 3.5 STEAM night tomorrow at the high school, starting at 5:00 PM. So if you have time to go look at some wonderful STEM projects made by our youngsters, I'm sure it's going to be a great night. To your question, there was, I can't stress enough the reading the newsletters, but I want to highlight, they talk about an event with our pre-K students that they did for Black History Month, and just highlighting how well it was embedded into their learning. So they have a unit on clothing, which really supports students with fine motor skills, mathematical skills as they count the buttons, literacy learning about clothes. But they took and optimized this opportunity to really bring in about how different cultures do different styles of dressing. And they actually brought in someone who is a well-known fashion designer to talk to students about fashion, and they ended with their own fashion show in pre-K. So like, what a great way to really bring that into, not as an extra event, an aside, but to really embed it into where our students, and starting as early as pre-K. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Very nice.
So upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Education Student Discipline Committee presents the following resolutions for the board's consideration. E1, the superintendent's report of HIB. E1A, to affirm the superintendent's determination of HIB. E2, to approve the Bar Family Workshop event. E3, approved to amend the summer dates for the credit recovery program. E4, Union High School Long-Term Suspension Home Instruction. E5, approved makeup days for Hannah Caldwell Elementary School.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Madam President? Yes, I'd just like to thank Dr. Benacosta and the administration for the recommendation, E5, regarding the makeup days for Hannah Caldwell School. These were, there was a survey taken in the school of both the staff and the families, and these were the top three days. They will offer minimal disruption to the overall program of the school. All three of these days happened to be days when other schools in the district will not be in session. But the Hannah Caldwell School community felt that they would be the most appropriate way to make up the days that were lost early in the year when we had to close the school.
Thank you so much. Ms. Furia?
I just want to thank the district, because as we're seeing attack on some of our most vulnerable and marginalized students, to see something here to support our multilingual learners, and that we are committed to all of our community members, all of our students. So I just wanted to thank the district and the leadership for that.
Thank you, Ms. Furia. This motion has been properly moved by Ms. Furia and seconded by Mr. Kohan. Can I have a roll call, please, Ms. Capiello?
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Furia?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Nasta?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes. Next, we will have the Fiscal and Planning Chair, Mr. Kohan and Mr. McDowell, to present the resolutions that will be voted upon tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. I won't add anything to the comments that I made on the budget, but I would like to call the board's attention to, and the community's attention, to resolutions F-13 and F-14, because these illustrate some of the extraordinary costs that we have within the budget to provide the required educational services for some of our students. These two resolutions represent almost a quarter of a million dollars just to transport two students for the balance of this school year. It's an incredible expenditure. We, Mr. McDowell and I, have had conversations with the administration about taking a look at these particular placements and the particular bus services that we are under contract to determine whether or not we can find some savings in this specific area next year.
That's great.
So that concludes the additional commentary about the budget, in addition to my prior comments. And I'll defer to Mr. McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Kohan.
And thank you, Mr. Kohan. And once again, I'd like to thank you for going into a lot of detail on some of the finances that the district is experiencing now. And Madam President, since there are, there were no questions about any of the resolutions in fiscal and planning, I'd like to pass them in bulk.
Sure.
Except for F-7, which was approved last week, and I think there's one, F Attorney, which is one that we do not have to vote on. For legal services.
Second.
Any discussion? The motion has been properly moved by Mr. McDowell and seconded by Mr. Kohan. Can I have a roll call, please, Ms. Capiello?
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Furia?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Nasta?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Furia. Next, we will have the Operations Committee Chair, Mr. Nasta, and Ms. Conte Mackey, to present the resolutions that will be voted upon tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Nasta and myself, really, you know, listening to the budget constraints and how much money we as a community are losing from a federal level, we want to really give a shout-out to the Facilities Team members, who have really been working round the clock diligently on projects, keeping our infrastructure kind of sound. It's no mistake that our buildings are over 100 years old. There are countless problems, and as we look to the budget and the limitations of what we'll be getting, you know, we hear, you know, the salary of our team members, and that needs to be to keep our education to standards. But as the list goes and decisions are made, the infrastructure is always kind of at the bottom of the list because of the budget constraints. And so I am truly hopefully hoping that, you know, we'll get a Hail Mary, where we'll get some additional funding to our district, because our buildings are in need of it. But I really want to, and Greg and I really want to say thank you to the Facilities Team members, who have been working round the clock, due diligence, just trying to help these buildings hold afloat while we figure out ways to get the resources to rebuild our infrastructure. And so that's what I wanted to add to it.
Thank you, Ms. Conte Mackey. I'm assuming both physical and cyber?
Yes. Because it all falls under it. You know, I think a lot of times, whenever we think of operations, it's just, oh, the buildings. But security is a part of that, upgrading maintenance with our security infrastructure, our cybersecurity in the world that we live in now. The educational component takes a hit because of the laptops, Chromebooks, and things to keep our district moving to a level of excellence that we already have. But with this budget going the way it is, and not really knowing what direction financially will the toll take on our, on our community, it is of concern, and we don't want to not express our concerns. And every time we attend operations meetings, we have to hold our heart, because it's just like, oh my God, the boiler, or is it the roof? And we all know, you know, what we encountered with Hannah Caldwell. And so that being said, it's really just letting the community know that from a budget-wise, it's really constrained and the limitations in operations does take a hit, and it is a cost to board. And so we just want to put that out there in full transparency.
Thank you so much, Ms. Conte Mackey. Mr. Nasta?
Thank you. Upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Operations Committee presents the following resolutions for the board's consideration. O1, approved security drill bus evacuation reports. And O2, approved request to use Union High School auditorium. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This motion has been properly moved by Mr. Nasta and seconded by Ms. Conte Mackey. Can I have a roll call, please, Ms. Capiello?
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Furia?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Nasta?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes. Next, we will have the Personnel Committee, Ms. Scott Hayden and Ms. Santana, chairs, I'm sorry, Ms. Scott Hayden and Ms. Santana, to present the following resolutions that will be voted upon tonight.
Good evening. Due to some legal nature of items discussing personnel, there will be items we cannot bring forward to the public. However, the Personnel Committee welcomes you, the community, to our monthly board meeting. As we move to continuously fill necessary positions to ensure that we are meeting the needs of every student, we want to also acknowledge all of our retirees and thank all educators who have served our children over the years. It is our intent to make sure that whatever adversity that may come through budget cuts, both state and federal, that our students' success remains the focus of our decision-making, and that we work collaboratively to ensure that we maintain educational excellence by retaining the best and brightest professionals across the spectrum. We, as a community, must remain vigilant in these times of uncertainty, and unite as a union community to demand that children and staff have all they need to continue to move into exemplary public schools in this township. When we stand together, union, we win. Ms. Santana will read the resolutions. resolutions. Thank you.
Nicely said, Ms. Scott Hayden. Ms. Santana?
Thank you so much. May I move this in a block, Madam Chair?
Of course.
Thank you. Upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Personnel Committee presents the following resolutions for the board's consideration. I have P-1A through P-5.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This motion has been properly moved by Ms. Santana and seconded by Ms. Scott Hayden. Can I have a roll call, please, Ms. Capiello?
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey? Mrs. Faria?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Nasta?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes. In the absence of Ms. Manisi, Chair, one of the Chairs of the Policy Committee, Ms. Faria, if you don't mind, will present the resolutions that will be voted upon tonight.
Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Policy Committee presents the following policies for the board's consideration. This is a final reading and adoption. Policy 4, 0141, Board Member Number and Term. Policy 5, Policy Number 2200, Curriculum Content. Policy 6, Policy 3160, Physical Examination. I should have done block. Policy 7, Policy 4160 on Physical Examination. Policy 8, Policy Number 5337, Service Animals. Policy 9, Policy 5350, Student Suicide Prevention. Policy 10, Policy Number 8420, Emergency and Crisis Situations.
Bless you.
Bless you. Policy 11, Policy Number 8467, Firearms and Weapons. Policy 12, Number 9181, Volunteer Athletic Coaches and Co-Curricular Activity Advisors and Assistants. Policy 13, Regulation 3160, Physical Examination. Policy 14, Regulation 4160, Physical Examination for Supporting Path. Policy 15, Regulation 5200 on Attendance. Policy 16, Regulation 8467 on Firearms and Weapons. Policy 17, which is to abolish Policy 0164.6, Remote Public Board Meetings During a Declared Emergency. Finally, but not least, Policy 18 is to abolish Policy 7231, Gifts from Vendors.
Thank you so much, Ms. Faria. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This motion has been properly moved by Ms. Faria and seconded by Ms. Santana. Can I have a roll call, please, Ms. Capiello?
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Faria?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Nasta?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes. Moving along, we will have the Residency Committee Chair, Mr. McDowell, present the following non-voting resolutions.
Thank you, Madam President. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Residency Committee presents the following resolution for the board's consideration. And again, these are non-voting resolutions. R1 is the removal of, voluntary removal of a student. R2 is to another, to approve the removal of a student from the attendance roles who's not domiciled in Union. And so that gives us for the, for the year, again, this is non-voting, students removed, seven students have been removed from our district, and 11 students have left voluntarily.
Point of order, Madam President. It does appear that Resolution R2 requires a vote.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Does the motion have to change?
No. Any discussion? All right, this...
R2.
R2 has been properly moved by Mr. McDowell and seconded by Mr. Kohan. May I have a roll call, please?
Scott Hayden.
I apologize.
It's okay.
Who was it?
Scott Hayden.
Whatever you choose.
Oh. Properly moved by Mr. McDowell and seconded by Ms. Scott Hayden. May I have a roll call, please, Ms. Capiello?
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
I was here.
Mrs. Conte Mackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Faria?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Nasta?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes. There are no technology resolutions to present for tonight's meeting. May I have a motion to approve the bills list?
Solemnly moved.
Second.
Discussion? The motion has been properly moved by Mr. Kohan and seconded by Ms. Santana. Can I have a roll call, please, Ms. Capiello?
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Faria?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Nasta?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes. And I just want to say for the record, when I ask for a second, I hear like three or four different voices, colleagues. So it's hard to ascertain who. I'm just picking one of you in a given moment. Unfinished business. No one?
I just wanted to bring to light, I think I mentioned it during our work session, we hosted the wrestling tournament. It was a great event. I would invite everyone in the upcoming years to come out and support Union High School. We wrestled well, and we will live to fight another year.
Thank you so much, Ms. Santana. New business?
Madam President?
Mr. Kohan?
Thank you. I too would like to offer a comment about Saturday's St. Patrick's Day Parade. While it was your first, it was my 28th.
Yes. And you dressed apart. And you know what? I was going to say that because you should see Mr. Kohan's cane that comes with a beautiful story, full of history and love. And you certainly were a great mentor as I walked with you through the procession.
So as I shared with Ms. Santana, I have my grandfather's walking stick. It's sometimes referred to as a shillelagi, although this is a walking stick, a hickory walking stick. And it sits by my front door 364 days a year, and on the 365th day, it goes with me to the St. Patrick's Day Parade, and I carry it up Morris Avenue. I was also wearing my father's Aaron Knit Sweater.
Yes.
So I've got all the, all the generations marching along with me. And I, I was also very proud to see the marching contingent from Union High School. The junior ROTC marching unit was just spectacular. They were very, very impressive. They're huge. There had to be 80 to 100 students marching, and they looked fantastic. Ms. Bossard led the way with the rest of the students that were marching. And I would like to challenge my colleagues on the board, I think for the Memorial Day Parade coming up at the end of May, we should all be marching together in front of the Union High School contingent.
I just want to say that we discussed this together. It was not just his idea.
But I'm challenging the board. And then...
We certainly would welcome marching with the students, I think, right? And representing our school district.
And I have one final comment, Madam President. In light of all of the news coming from Washington, DC, and the announced cuts to the Department, Federal Department of Education, and the stated intention to close the department, and, and all of the other policy decisions that are being made, you know, one of the things that I've said over the years is, as we all know, this is not my statement, but, you know, elections have consequences. And one of the things that I've said after each election is that the winner of the election has the right to prosecute the policy priorities that they hold and that they've shared with the public in their election campaign. What disturbs me about some of the decisions that are being announced out of Washington these days is that they fly in the face of what I believe to be established law. They fly in the face in what I believe to be the established norms and values of our country. I believe time will tell as to what the courts have to say because we do have a constitutional government that has checks and balances, and the judiciary interprets laws and executive actions, and we will see what the final outcome is. What disturbs me most is that we are at a point in our civic lives as a country that we're unable to have conversation and dialogue with one another over these important issues in ways where people who may have differing opinions can understand why others hold different opinions. I don't agree with much of what's happening right now personally, and I've got grave concerns about what's going to happen to our students and our community and our school district if the most draconian cuts are made to the funding that we rely on. As Dr. Benequista reported, almost $900,000 in federal funding will not be forthcoming in the new year, at least, and it could be more. So I would just encourage all of my neighbors, all of my fellow citizens in Union, to just continue to pay attention, make certain you know what the issues are, and let elected officials know how you feel because that's the only way that we can have our voices heard and affect change. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kohan, for very, very insightful words. Ms. Scott Hayden?
Yes, and thank you, Michael Kohan, for those words as well. I just wanted to state for myself, I'm also going to read something for Ms. Manisi, who is not here, but to follow up on what you were saying, I had the pleasure of sending in a ACLU presentation today for work, and they indicated that they are willing to come to the school district to speak to our staff because the presentation was about all of the executive orders that are coming out of Washington, DC, which are not legal because our laws are defined by the Congress. You just can't write an executive order and overturn the actual law. So while our president seems to think that he can, he's written 90 executive orders in his short time in office already, even the disbandment of the Department of Education, which is currently being challenged in court as we speak, by the National Education Association, is on the docket. Also, they discuss ICE raids and knowing your legal rights and how to handle it in regards when ICE should come into our school buildings. So knowing your rights for our students, the citizens, our educators as well, and what a legal warrant actually looks like. So what you should be looking for is someone says, I have a warrant, what that actual document should entail and have on it. I think it's worth us as a district, as a township, to actually have the ACLU come in and present the very presentation that we were fortunate enough to have today because it was highly informative. I'm pretty sure most of us don't know what an actual legal warrant for detainment from ICE actually looks like and what you, the benchmarks that you should be looking for, but also knowing the questions to ask if someone should be detained. So I'm going to implore our superintendent and his administration to look into having a night maybe with, either just starting with staff, or perhaps the community wants to link and have an ACLU. They said they're willing to come and present the information. All you need to do is fill out a form and a request, and they're willing to do so.
And, and Ms. Scott Hayden, thank you again, as you bring a lot of stuff back to our district. I'll be happy to reach out and have something scheduled.
Thank you so much.
And these remarks are in behalf of Ms. Nancy Manisi. She said, "Thank you, Ms. Bronzmeier, for inviting me to read to the pre-K classes at Livingston School. I really enjoyed reading to Ms. Bronzmeier, Janowski, Katone, and Motley classes. The interaction was amazing. One student even told me that there was an alliteration in the story. Thank you to our amazing students and educators. As a member of the Senior Citizen Advisory Board, I am also pleased that our members are so grateful and happy that our Union High School students come to the center and provide services. Thank you to Ms. Royster and her cosmetology students for providing our seniors with manicures. Thank you to Ms. Zizer and her allied health students for providing valuable services to our seniors. This collaboration between Senior Center Director Ms. Teresa and our administrations is amazing. This is a true example of collaboration within this great township of Union. Have a great day and week, she said, and she'll see you at the next meeting."
Thank you so much, Ms. Scott Hayden. And I believe the police department was involved in the reading or donating?
Yes.
So, Mr. Kohan? In the fire?
I also was invited by Ms. Bronzmeier to read in her classroom, and I just, I'll repeat the comment I made last week. There's nothing quite like having a spontaneous hug from a dozen four-year-olds.
Yes, I agree. I also want to bring up, and we brought him up last week, Mr. Riley, the security guard that heroically was with his family at the time, was not at work, but witnessed a car accident, and the car, there was a fire, right? And he very courageously, without thinking, selflessly saved someone's life. So he is one of our staff members. He's recuperating, obviously, burned, you know, his hands. But kudos to you and much respect to you, Mr. Riley, and thank you. Thank you for your service. I believe he was a firefighter?
He was a union police officer and firefighter during his career, and as soon as he does get healthy, we're going to make sure we recognize his heroic, you know, how he reacted in that, he was a hero.
And last but not least, thank you, Mr. Kohan and Ms. Scott Hayden for your words. I thought that they were very timely. And I just want to remind our community that was going to set us apart during this very difficult time is us working together and not forgetting that what we do, we have to do on behalf of children, that children are watching us, and that ultimately what children are looking for is, just like us adults, is love and a sense of purpose. And as we engage in sharing different points of views and perspective, let's do it with respect and model what communication looks like, what collaboration looks like, and what empathy looks like. So with that, I will open the floor for public comments. Thank you. First is Ms. Latisha Easterling. And please correct me, everyone, if I mispronounce your name. I promise I will get it right the second time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Latisha Easterling, as she said. My daughter attends Franklin Elementary School.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I just have a few questions, concerns, and issues with the redistricting. So the first one is, what are the anticipated benefits of this change for the students, teachers, and community? Where will the, where will the extra money be saved for the transportation go towards? How will the lunches be ran at Franklin Elementary School? Currently, they only have 20 minutes to eat lunch. How long will recess be with the transition between the K and 6th grade? Will the schools be modified or upgraded to accommodate additional students? Will the bathrooms be renovated, upgraded specifically at Franklin Elementary? The boys' bathroom have been updated, but not the girls? Parents have issues with their first graders using the same bathrooms as a 6th grader? 6th grade is considered as a middle schooler. How will the school measure the students' progress and provide feedback? How will the curriculum be structured and aligned across grade levels? What teaching methodologies and strategies will be used to cater to the different learning disabilities and styles and needs? How will the school support additional students with special needs or learning differences? What is the timeframe on the redistricting? When will the parents be notified? And those are some of my questions or concerns.
Thank you so much, Ms. 27th. Ms. Easterling, and I love your questions. And one of the things that we want to encourage is questions from our community members that impact them and us as well, and also ideas as we work through these times. So on March 27th, a letter was sent out to...
So on March 27th, we're bringing... So on March 27th, we're bringing all the committees together. Shortly, right pretty much after that, there'll be a community update on what direction we're going with the realignment. As a lot of things were brought up, we're still looking at a lot of different points of data, and we wanted to bring the committees together to allow them to also respond to some of the work they've been doing, and then make a final decision for the upcoming year as well as our future.
And please understand that as we move forward, we will be adjusting as needed and as information is provided to us, based on the capacity to successfully, you know, fold this, I mean, execute this plan. So thank you so much for your feedback. Additionally, one of the areas, oh, you may sit down if you want, I apologize. One of the areas that we have been looking at for a couple of years is how much we spend on transportation. It is a big, one of our biggest ticket items, and unfortunately, I know, change, the change is difficult, there's a dip implementation phase, right, where people are accustomed to things, but we do have to, change is necessary for us to continue moving forward. So thank you so much for your questions and your feedback, and I hope that we can see you on the 27th. Ms. Danielle Pinkney? Did I say that right? Ms. Danielle Pinkney? Okay, thank you. Ms. or Mr. Jaquiel Brighton? I am killing this. Ms. Chanel Schullers? Thank you.
Good evening, Ann Margaret Shannon, 2591 Spruce Street, and the UTEA president. So lots to piggyback on tonight, because Mr. Cohen and I too have marched in the parade for 28 years. But more importantly, the Union Township Education Association and its sister organization, the Union, did I say Union Township or Union County? The Union County Education Association, we have been faithfully marching for probably almost 20 years by now, so it's a really great day. We do have a nice little breakfast at the office in Union Center, so hopefully next year some of you will join us. On Read Across America Day, when the police do give the children books, the Union Township Education Association is a financial partner with them to help them purchase those books, so we always enjoy that partnership. And number three, so about financing, and finally about the shenanigans in the federal government regarding public schools, the Union Township Education Association, hopefully everyone knows, is organizing a rally tomorrow. I am so appreciative that last week, my colleagues in the NJEA met with myself, the board president, Carmenelle, vice president Scott, our board, I mean, our administration was there, Dr. Rodriguez, Dr. Benacquista has been really involved, the township committee has been involved, the police. We are going to have a rally tomorrow morning. Coffee and donuts are coming out at 6:30, and the speakers are speaking at 6:50. It's going to be at the Board of Ed Building on Morris Avenue. The police are really helping us out to keep everyone safe. We have some great speakers, Madam President, Senator Cryon, Dr. Benacquista, who else? NJEA, I'll say a few words, oh, Mayor Bowser, so it's going to be a great event. I know it's early, but it's a walk into school, so we can't have it after school when we walk out of school. So we're having a walk-in at 6:30 AM. I hope you're all going to be there, and please, wear red for Ed. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shannon. And Bernadette was also there on Saturday, so thank you so much, and she gave beads at no cost, right? Thank you. Ms. Natalia Lopes, did I get it right tonight, Ms. Lopes? Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Natalia Lopes, 871 Peachtree Road. So I went to the high school. I walked tonight to the high school for this meeting, and thankfully, somebody was there and gave me a ride here, because I looked on the website, and it said high school, Union High School, not just me, but there was a few other people there.
I truly apologize for that.
I already spoke to Ms. Nunes, and she said she's going to look into it, because it was not put everywhere where that the meeting was here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your work, and I have a question on the policy 17, abolish policy 0164.6, remote public board meeting during a declared emergency. Are we abolishing that we're never going to have remote again, or are we abolished? I'm trying to understand.
No, I think, is that your only question comment?
Yeah, well, I have, I'm not into finances, but are we by any chance as school board doing biddings to see who gets like the insurance for the teachers, all of this? Or are we just giving it to somebody that's been here for a while?
No, bids, depending on... On certain amounts, Ms. Kuhn, would you like to speak a little bit on the bidding process?
My question is just, do we have biddings? You don't have to tell me to what.
Yeah, we have to, by code, I mean by statute.
Okay.
And in terms of the policies, so the way that it works for school districts, and I'll give you a very short answer, but we, a company is hired, Strauss Esme, and they recommend what policies need to be added or removed. Should districts have to go back to remote? What they would do is update it based on the governor's guidance and the law at that time. So, thank you so much.
I know that there was a question from a few parents that wanted to know if we could bring it back so they could be part of it.
Yes, it's usually like that, it's based on the current codes and laws and public laws that are put in place. Thank you. Is that it? Ms. Kathleen Brunsmires, it's hard to take you very seriously with that poster when Very exciting.
Good evening, everyone. Kathleen Brunsmires.
Good evening.
287 Bloomingdale Avenue in Cranford during the nighttime, Livingston Elementary School during the day. I wanted to give a huge shout-out to all the readers who came in, and we have some future readers who weren't able to make it, but we did have many that are seated among you come in to read to my class and the other classes that we have now at Livingston, including our Hannah Caldwell adoptees, pre-K. I had many parents who came in as well, so I want to thank them. The fire department and the police department came in, I want to thank them as well. The Union, we've provided some of the things that were offered during the week of Read Across America, so it was a great collaboration. I invite anybody who's listening to reach out to their classes in elementary school, maybe middle school, high school, they wouldn't let you come in to read a book to your kids, but if you're out there and you're listening, the kids love to read, they love to be read to, and I don't think they care how old they are, they really love to sit and enjoy a story. And so I put it out there to the rest of you to please come in anytime you want, and the parade was awesome. I usually march with the Union, but I wasn't great this week, so I sat and got to enjoy the parade, and it was awesome. I agree, the band from the high school was amazing, to get to see so many of my former students walking was fabulous, and it was a great opportunity for the town, the county, and everyone to just come out and get their Irish on, in case you didn't notice.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. You too. Ms. Trish Gomes?
Hi, good evening, Trish Gomes, 47 Brookdale Road. I just have two concerns, or is the district going to do anything about verifying that the students who are actually in our school systems, really Union students, especially with all the budget stuff going on? If you're like, can we verify that everybody really is a Union resident? And my other question is, if the state or federal government does cut funding for meals for some of these children who need morning breakfasts and lunches, is there going to be a plan in place to how to feed these poor kids?
So right now, the verdict is not fully in on the federal allocations. However, the state has recommended that we plan conservatively, which the district, we're very, you know, appreciative of the district leadership, Dr. Benacquista, Ms. Kuhn, and the other leader, district leaders, but we don't, we will not have that information just yet. I am, usually when situations like that occur, the state does jump in and provide additional aid, but it is in our radar. I know Madam Vice and a few other of my colleagues to my left and my right, we've been sharing articles to make sure that we stay on top of what's happening, and we will certainly come up with a plan to ensure that our children eat meals, because we know that with an empty stomach, it's not conducive for learning or just having a happy child. So we are very aware of that, and we're thinking of everything possible to make that happen. In terms of the residency, I'm glad you bring that up, and I want to give a shout-out to Mr. McDowell and Ms. Manisi, and I believe you joined a couple of those meetings, Ms. Scott Hayden. They've been working diligently to, whenever they get information, to work with the administration to engage the parents and the students through a process to make, to vet them, and make sure that they verify that they are residents of Union. And listen, I'm an educator and I'm a parent, it breaks my heart to have to send a child away, but the reality is that we can only serve our own right now, and that's just the reality. And I hear situations where individuals tell me the kids are coming from a bus stop or something, we just all have to be vigilant, and if you see something, say something. And I hate it that it has to be this way, but the reality is, we do the right thing in Union Township. Our families are hard-working families, and part of this formula that impacted us is because the residents of Union Township do the right thing every day. So we were penalized for doing the right thing, and subsequent to that, our children should not be further penalized. We need to serve them and prioritize them. So thank you for your questions.
And just to follow up, Madam President, we have some fabulous investigators that when they get the information, let me tell you, they're on it. I told the gentleman, we were in a hearing the other day, I said, "I remember when I moved to this town, and I came out my house, and I saw you across the street, and I was like, hmm, who is that?" Right, and he's like, "I can't..." I said, "No, you were at my house." I said, "You asked me, let me see your three grandchildren, I need to make sure they live with you." So I can assure you, it's two of them, I believe, that's doing the investigations. When I tell you, when they come to those hearings, they have, it's not one or two pages, it's five or six pages of data where they have followed these people, we know what kind of car they drive, when they leave the house in the morning, when they drop the kids off, where they go to at night, if they sleep in the house. So by the time they get to us, we have enough information to know whether or not these people actually live in Union or if they're living somewhere else. So yes, we are doing our due diligence, and we continue to do, will do so.
I just want to also add to that, that we probably don't have enough investigators, and as Madam President said, if you see something, say something, or if you know something, contact the district. And just to let you know how serious we are about this, one of the students that we voted to eject tonight is in the 12th grade, 12th grade, and we're in March, and we're putting this person out, 12th grader, but we are serious about this, and if you know anything about students that are not living in Union and going to school in Union, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. McDowell. Anybody else? Ms. Luisa Baez.
Good evening. Good evening. Luisa Baez, 591 Duquesne Terrace, Union, New Jersey. So I also was going to talk about residency verification. A few years ago, we did everything online to lessen the manpower of someone having to collect or make lines or whatever, so we have to think of creative ways to do residency verification, because there definitely are people that don't live here that go to school here. So I also was one that went to the Union High School, because I verified it, and on the website, it said Union High School.
I apologize for that.
The location was not updated, so, okay. So I'm not sure if I'm too late, but I think I am too late, but I was going to talk about P5, the Approved Attendance at American Association of School Personnel Administration. So we're talking about all the money that we don't have, and we, how are we going to pull this? We have some top-heavy administrators that are going to go to Nashville, Tennessee for an annual conference of $8,000. I'm just saying, we have to cut where we have to cut.
I'm sorry, Ms. Baez, what resolution are you referring?
I'm looking at P5, Approved Attendance at American Association of School Personnel Administration. We just have to be very transparent, and where we are cutting and what we're doing, we need to really think about what programs we're going to cut before we cut AIDS or anything else. We need everybody, we have top-heavy administration that we need to look at. Thank you.
No, thank you so much. Dr. Benacquista, can you give some information about this training?
So as we do yearly, all staff put in to go for professional development, and a lot of times, I don't know, Ms. Kuhn, if it maybe helped me, or we could get the information back to Ms. Baez, but a lot of times, there's certain funds that have to be spent on professional development, so it might not be local funds that, you know, sometimes we can't use funds for areas that we wish we could use it for. But I would have to look a little further into it, but I could tell you, part, one of the biggest things to us to get better as a district is ensuring that a lot of our staff, if not all, are receiving adequate professional development to continue to progress forward.
And in some of these conferences, I will say, we do gain units of training. I know for the board, we have to attend an annual conference for specific trainings, so, but thank you so much for the question. And following up on, because you were the second comment about the location, I just want to let everyone know, Ms. Lopes also, our next April and May regular meetings will be held here at Town Hall. I believe after that, we will probably be next door, but that is still tentative, but I will keep you up to speed, so that way you have the information as well. All right? Thank you so much, ladies.
And next door, meaning the new library?
Yes, the new library. Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Madam President, if I just might make a comment, although everyone is right, our website should be updated with where we are, there is also a subscription service that when I was coming in, just as a parent, you literally, you subscribe to it every time there's a change for anything that we do here, you will get an email, and it will have the most up-to-date data. I am not saying that we should not have the most up-to-date data on the website, but with those emails, I even remember where to go with those emails, because I still subscribe to it, so I'm just putting that out there. So, I'm just putting that out there.
So, we did send out a robocall today regarding it. I could have another one sent out tonight, just to, again, ensure that everyone knows it's starting at the Board Office. I'm looking at the website now, I'm trying to find it myself.
Ms. Bernadette, we have some information.
I can't, I'm sorry.
Bernadette Watson?
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, good.
2511 Branford Avenue, or my other address, 855 Lehigh Avenue. There were two places for tonight's meeting on the calendar. It did say the high school, but if you go to the Board of Education tab on our website to, let's go back. The Board meeting information, go down to Scheduling Notices. February 14th, we did post to say that the meetings for February and March would be here at Town Hall.
Thank you so much. And it doesn't hurt to share in multiple places, and I...
Going forward, we'll make sure that it's been changed.
And Board members, if you remind me, we'll also announce it at next month's meeting, just to keep everybody apprised. Mr. Ramon Hernandez? Good evening, Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening, Madam President, and fellow Board members.
Good evening.
Excuse me. Ramon Hernandez, 135 Lower Avenue. This is also my first time attending a school board meeting for this town, and I'm as a local resident.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, yes, welcome.
Thank you. The reason why I'm here, because I'm looking at some concerns. I have been reading, I've been spending my time reading the agendas. One of the main concerns I have, that when I see any policy coming into the agenda, I'm not seeing the details within that policy, which is, I have to say, it's, I see it has to, is going to approve, or what it goes to, but inside that, inside the policy, it doesn't show what is, what is there, and it's becoming less transparent when it goes to the public. For example, I was looking at more at Policy 0141, and on this page, on 0, Policy 8467, which I noticed it's twice inside in one sheet. Because when I see the, when I see the policy in here, it doesn't show the details inside that policy, that what's in there and why it has to be approved or not. That's what, that's something I have a concern here, that if it's going to introduce a policy, inside the policy has to be added in there so that people have a right to know. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we'll certainly have a discussion with the superintendent about this and the process of sharing. I promise you that.
Thank you.
Virginia Jeffries, 236 Brighton Avenue, East Orange, New Jersey.
Good evening.
Good evening to all in attendance, physically and virtually. There are concerns on the agenda and the March 11th, 2025 work session agenda, which I spoke at previously in another segment of this board meeting, but I will repeat it. Under physical planning, why is the check register so unorganized? Two, why are the checks not in sequential order? Three, why is the check register in the form of a running account for all attorney costs? Four, why is there a check only for legal fees and on a bills and claims by vendor name as in Item 17 Approval Bills? Five, why are the invoice identifications not in the invoice column? And this was in our Approval Bills Number 17 during the work session. And then, again, why? One, why is the check register different for all other vendors, lawyers, and government agencies? The check register is not consistent. Two, why are these check registers not treated as running record? And these were the March Bills 1, 2, 3, 4 in a PDF. On tonight's agenda, Item 18 Approval Bills for March 18th. There have been additions added to this. They are March 2025 Bills Number 5, March 2025 Bills Number 6, March 2025 Bills Number 7, March 2025 Bills Number 8, March 2025 Bills Number 9. March Bill Number 16, A, most pending payments have no dates when services, goods are rendered. And those are Pages 1 through 4. And Bill Number 7, why does each vendor ID have the same check number, which is Number 3142025? B, why is the check number 3142025 identified as an HP, hand-printed only? I understand it's payroll, but it's confusing. Number 8, most pending bills have no dates when services/goods are rendered. Number 9, some pending payments have no date of when services/goods are rendered. An example, number 1, is PG Chambers School on Page 3. There's no date at all for this service provided. And another example is 2, many checks are slated CP, which are computer partial for charter schools and non-public schools without any dates to them. And this, look at Pages 6 through 9 on that. Also, the issue about the meeting dates for the year. Have all board meetings at the admin building for work session, and at the Union High School for regular meetings. It's been quite a while that these meetings have taken place at City Hall. However, there has never been an update to the meeting dates and where they take place, except when the agenda is published. And so, therefore, most of the public are unaware that the regular meeting dates are not going to be held at the Union High School. And that can easily be corrected. That could easily be amended. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jeffries, and we'll certainly correct that. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I don't believe we have additional cards. No? And I hope everyone gets home safe. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Capiello, robocall, please.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Furia?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Nasta?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Carmonell?